Two thousand seventeen Wheat Ridge City Council Study Session. Thank you all for being here. We have, we have a number of citizens here to speak tonight, which I'm, which I'm really glad to see. We also have a, and generally citizens talk first on the agenda, but I'd like to get the council's feeling. We have a short report from the Arvada Community Food Bank. Would it be the pleasure of the council to have that report first? Or would you like to go ahead with citizen comments first? For, do the food bank proposal first? Okay. So if the Arvada Community Food Bank is here and ready to present to us, we're happy to have you.
Hello?
Hello?
Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, Dan Brennan, Police Chief, I'd just like to take the opportunity, some of you know and have met Sandy Martin before, but Sandy is the Executive Director of the Arvada Community Food Bank. I first met Sandy when I became chief back in two thousand and five, and she was the Director of the Head Start Foundation, which was working on building the Head Start that's located in Wheat Ridge now. So Sandy wanted to come tonight and just give you a brief update on what's going on with the Arvada Community Food Bank and the services they're providing to, to our citizens, and I think she has an ask in there as well. So Sandy, I'll turn it over to you.
Very good, thank you. So what I'm going to focus on with the council tonight are those programs that we specifically offer to Wheat Ridge residents, and which has been a pleasure of ours to do. We're real close to Wheat Ridge, and we appreciate the support that we get from you. So the two programs primarily that clients or residents of Wheat Ridge come to for the food bank is our Client Choice Program, which is like a grocery store, if you will. And Wheat Ridge citizens can come in, bring a piece of mail and a picture ID, and we put them in our system, so we're able to give you all those great reports we send. And then they're able to go into the store and shop for what their family will eat. In the old days, it used to be, give them a box of food, and then they would go out the door and be on their way. Now, we got to realizing that, you know, they know much better than we do what their family will eat. We have really structured the client store to be very nutritionally sound, with fresh fruits and vegetables, good protein, carbohydrates, good ones. We do have a few sweets tucked in there as well. But they will shop for their families and what they will eat. And what we found is that was, there was a lot less food wasted when we did that, because what would happen is they'd say, "My family doesn't eat green beans," and we might find green beans left on the, by the door. So this way, they're able to shop and provide a really balanced nutritional diet for their family. They can visit us up to twelve times per year, and we had, last fiscal year, we had close to eighteen hundred individual residents of Wheat Ridge come through the food bank. So that could, when I say individual, those are unique to the sense that they're not duplicated count. So they might be one individual coming in to shop for the average family size of four. So you can imagine that can accumulate quite a few numbers of people that we serve. So that is a terrific program, and I'd really encourage any member of city council that wants to take a tour, to give me a call, and I'd like to take you through. The other program that we do that is very near and dear to our heart, and I know it also is to the city council in Wheat Ridge, is a program we do with Dan's group called Feeding the Future, and that's Children's Backpack Program. And we're up to about, I think, three hundred and fifty-four kids last year for Wheat Ridge. And we have this really unique relationship with Dan and the committee that he has prepared together. We kind of do the ordering and supply volunteers and do the training, and Dan runs his committee, and they raise the funds for that program. And this partnership has formed over about the last eight years, and we are feeding three hundred and fifty-four children in that program that are getting a sack of food at the, on Friday before they leave to go home, and are able to take that with them on the weekend and have that food for them to eat over the weekend where they may not normally have that. We're seeing the numbers grow. Last Monday, we had one hundred and, one hundred and one individuals come through the food bank on Monday, and it just gotten steady increase. So we're not so sure what's going on when it seems like the economy is doing well, but for folks that need to come visit us at the food bank, it's not as, as, as good as it is for some. So those are two of the programs that directly impact citizens in Wheat Ridge, and growth, it's going up. Just to give you some idea of what else we're doing at the food bank, we started three years ago, going on for a self-sufficiency program that Wheat Ridge citizens are also starting to, to use, and that is for us to do, hook them up with career counselors, and also for them to do a job, find with a counselor, redo their resumes. They're also able to come in and take classes with a tutor to do GED classes. We will assist them with purchase of books and taking their tests for their GEDs. I don't know if you've seen the new GED tests, but they're quite, they're quite difficult now to take, so a lot of hours go in for folks to study. We're starting another piece of it, which is called Client Financial Services, and we're working with the churches in our area, and I would suppose we would be liking to work with some of the churches in Wheat Ridge as well, for clients that need assistance with medical copays, or medications, or assistance with rent deposits, or with rent, monthly rent payments. It is much easier to keep a family in a resident they're in than for them to get evicted or lose their home, and then you start that process all over with them. We had a nonprofit religious-based group that was doing that for about forty years in Arvada called Inner Church Arms, and they closed their doors the end of May, so that's a, that's a real loss for not only Arvada, but they were serving Wheat Ridge as well. We're doing some remodeling in our building and adding some extra offices, but we're also putting a medical clinic in the facility that will help uninsured clients. We're doing that partnership with Red Rocks Community College, their Physicians Assistance Program, that will have the physician-assistant students under the supervision of a physician professor from the university, from the college. And so they'll get practical, hands-on work, and our clients or residents of Wheat Ridge, Arvada, et cetera, will be able to, to come in and be seen by them. I'm very excited about that, because our goal nutritionally is to keep them healthy, and obviously, we'd like to keep them healthy medically as well. So that's another avenue we're going down, and we're really excited about that. And then finally, and I'm just going to have to give you a teaser on this one, I can't give you the whole thing, we've been working with a marketing firm. We have listened very closely to our communities that we're also serving and realized that the Arvada Community Food Bank did not encompass all of the areas we were serving by the name, nor the services we're now providing. So we have been working with a marketing firm to look at renaming our organization that is more encompassing of everyone we serve. That is been a really exciting project, and the marketing firm is just terrific and has been very good to work with. But you can imagine, we had some apprehension at the beginning, because it's been the Arvada Community Food Bank for thirty-six years. So it will not have that name in it any longer. It will be more generic in the sense that it will then cover all of our communities and all of our services. So in about, I would say, a month, I'll be able to come back and give you the, the new name, the tagline, and show you the logos. With that said, it would be really wonderful to have a member of Wheat Ridge City Council staff that at some point would, would be willing to come on our Board of Directors. We have up to fifteen members on the board, and they are a governing board, not a operations board, and they're very integral to what we're doing at the food bank in terms of providing that kind of insightful strategic planning and vision for our organization to go forward. So I'd really love it if you would consider that. It'd be really nice to have someone on, on this board as well. And now we're taking down the, kind of the city lines, and we're all, isn't it? It's, it's great, isn't it? I think so too. And Wheat Ridge, we've always been really close to, so it's kind of like family. Do you have any questions of me? Yes.
I, I think I remember that you guys were doing a, kind of like a farm-to-table thing at one point, or like gardening and bringing those fresh vegetables into your food bank. Is that, is that true?
What we do, and this is pretty cool, is that we have a number of gardeners, and we have the Arvada gardeners, and we have a fresh produce that comes to us in the summer particularly. We, I mean, so much fresh produce, it's insane. But also, we have twenty-nine partners from different grocery stores, Whole Foods and those kinds of places, that provide fresh vegetables for us throughout the year, so that we are able to make sure that those nutritional needs are being met. In fact, with all of those partners, what, what we did strategically with our board a couple of years ago was to purchase a refrigerated truck. Now, you might wonder why that's so important, but if you think about it, for grocery stores, this is important, because we can then assure them that we will have the food at the proper temperature when we are transporting it back to the food bank. So the, the liability issues become zero. So with that said, that is able for us to, to, to bring in that kind of, of opportunity to the food bank. And then Arvada Gardeners has plots, and we will purchase plots for people to garden those, and they do about six, seven plots for us every summer just for the food bank. Did that answer your question? Yeah.
Thank you. Can you tell me a little bit more about the medical clinic, the hours, what kind of services are you going to provide?
I can't.
You can't? Okay.
Only because we're just putting those, those pieces of it together, and actually, I will be meeting with them next week, but it will be most likely during the hours that the food bank is open, because that's when a lot of our clients will come through and be identified. But we're talking with them about, and also looking at the food bank about the opportunity. We're looking at some more evening openings, and perhaps one day or some hours over the weekend. So when I get that information, though, I will be happy to report that to you, and I will get that back here to the city so that, and I'd be happy to come back and visit with you some more.
Okay, yeah, I'd really like to know what that is. And what are your hours right now?
Monday through Friday, with the exception of Wednesday, we're open from noon to three forty-five, and then on Wednesday, we're open from noon until five forty-five.
Okay. So for right now, we can just assume that the clinic hours would be about the same as these hours, right?
About the same.
Okay.
But it might be just one day a week. We have to see what the numbers are going to be, so.
What the need is.
Yeah, so we'll, you know, we can always add on later, but we'll probably start with maybe two or three days a month that it'll be open. And that will be by appointment.
Okay.
Because one of my staff will be working on that, and a staff member that is bilingual, so that we make sure we're able to get everybody scheduled in him.
Okay, thank you.
You are welcome.
And I may have missed it, would you give us your address again?
Eighty-five fifty-five West Fifty-seventh Avenue, and that's Arvada eight triple O two.
Mr. Matthews?
I'm a little curious, do you do any means testing at all, or verification whether or not your clients are on other government programs? I think it's called SNAP now, or what have you?
Actually, the, that's a good question. Actually, the Bridges Program does an intake on every client that they see that, that enters into that system, every, every other program those folks might be on. We actually have a human services technician that comes and signs those folks up for us at our offices. So that's one of the other services that's provided. We are going to, right now, we do not require income verification, or, we, we don't get quite that deep, because that would take quite a bit of, of, you know, additional volunteers to screen that. So what the requirements are is a picture ID and a piece of mail postmarked in the last thirty days, so we can verify those addresses and make sure they're within our service area. That's about as far as we get right now. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Any further questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for, for allowing us to take this in that order. Okay, so for the record, I'd like to state that all of the councilors are at today's So we'd like to hear our citizen comment. And first, on the, on this speaking agenda is Jesse Hill, followed by Joan Blanchard and Barb Gallagher. So, Mr. Hill, and I believe we're going to the podium.
Hello, Council. Jesse Hill, two nine nine five Chase Street, for last eight years and three thousand and one Chase. Also here, representing others who have a dream for a home out there, like Cody and Dave. Tonight, we're hopefully going to discuss residential development and the neighborhood revitalization study that gets brought up into this. I'm someone who really read that study, accepted the challenge to invest and improve in our city. You're going to hear from a lot of others, I feel like, tonight, who also, you know, are seeing the change out there, and who might not be as comfortable with it. I get it, it can be emotional. But I hope everyone here tonight really sticks to the facts and the truth, avoids strong men and boogeymen out there. We're talking again about real citizens and homeowners across the board on this, so. The neighborhood revitalization plan and study out there really gave us some, you know, goals out there to how we can improve our housing stock, because that was, again, a big thing, what these citizens of the community wanted to see. And just myself on Chase Street over in District One, like there are real conditions with the current housing stock. This isn't made up for real houses, and the houses we're talking about that are getting redeveloped, dangerous outdated electrical wiring, crumbling and cracked foundations, basements prone to flooding, asbestos throughout it, outdated archaic floor plans that don't fit a modern family, lacking insulation, energy-efficient features, lead pipes coming into it, leaking sewer lines that go on the way out. And that's just, you know, a picture of what we're dealing with is the existing home that wants to be improved and built upon, and that's today, what citizens live in, okay? And no one wants that. We all wish for a better place. And again, so I'm the guy who wants to do something about this. I'm really looking forward to build a home that I can live in, but the day-to-day things that I'm running into in this development and revitalization out there is more than just lumber, drywall, and pipes. It's, you know, real difficulties out there. You know, one of the expansive soils that we have, you know, that require really expensive foundations, high water tables that rule a basement out, I got a lot that slopes that kicks off two and a half feet on my bulk plane. I've got, in, in that case, I've got to move my house two feet over, and then still bury one side of the house, another two feet down. All these things add up. A forty percent lot coverage that kind of forces me to build, you know, if I want to have any more space up, and that's maybe not something I want to do. High land costs, so. I ask you to think about what we're going to talk about neighborhood development, and are these actions making revitalization positive, or is it going to be more difficult? And also, you know, is this a process that we are, we're balancing, and it's fair? Is it a give and take, if, you know, out there? If you're going to remove the property and my development possibility, can we balance that out somewhere else? So I'm asking you, please, to all do this. I'm just a citizen homeowner, just wants a house to fill my dreams, those of us out there. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Our next speaker is Joan Blanchard, and Barb Gallagher is on deck.
Joan Blanchard, thirty-two ninety-five Kendall Street. I guess I'd like to reply to your previous speaker. We all update our homes on an ongoing basis. Not every home is crumbling and falling down. And I continue to hear that Denver is doing what Wheat Ridge wants to do, and we have very, very different communities. When you look at the three-story houses, some will become multi-family houses, creating problems for parking, garbage disposal, and basically privacy and sunlight issues. I think it changes the whole concept of what Wheat Ridge has been so proud to have in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. Our next speaker is Barb Gallagher, and Carol Matthews is on deck.
Barb Gallagher, thirty-six thirty Vance Street, Wheat Ridge. I guess the voice that I bring to this meeting is a plea for maintaining what makes Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge. I don't like seeing buildings up to the sidewalk. I don't like buildings that not only destroy the view, I mean, why did you come to, to Colorado? To avoid the mountains? Hmm? Not me. That's, I came to see the mountains. I thought that the regulations in place in Wheat Ridge were reasonable and livable. I hope that whatever compromise we come up with will maintain those aspects of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gallagher. Next up is Carol Matthews, and Michael Epsin is on deck.
Carol Matthews, thirty-eight fifty-one Hoyt Street, Wheat Ridge. Wheat Ridge was once again in the news this weekend for crime and violence. We hear the talk, and the majority of the city council certainly supports the city walk to increase the population of Wheat Ridge. But do numbers talk? Are we increasing the quality of life and living in Wheat Ridge by creating high-density, low-cost living spaces? Are we attracting traffic overload and crime? In two thousand and five, the study calls for more strong households, that is, family households, to sustain Wheat Ridge. The little bungalows, R one C, are the affordable housing for a positive population of Wheat Ridge with healthy families and diverse community life. These small homes are the history and the future of Wheat Ridge. To encourage the destruction of these affordable houses in favor of thirty-five-foot, three-story units selling for five to seven hundred thousand dollars defeats the lasting premise that Wheat Ridge is still a place for a diverse community population. The approval of these tall housing units builds walls, not bridges, in our community. Many of these tall houses house multiple unrelated residents. These residents do not blend into the small family communities, add marijuana and alcohol to the equation, and once peaceful, safe family communities turn into crime-ridden, high-risk areas. Wheat Ridge Council has rezoned many of the areas along our main corridors from commercial to multi-use, which is encouraging outsized developers to build high-rise, high-density housing units, which is increasing the traffic load and congestion on both main streets and residential streets in Wheat Ridge. The approval of tall houses with more residence potential increases street parking on residential streets, blocks the scenic views so valued in our area, and depletes our supply of affordable family housing in our city. This has a devastating effect on our schools. Where do you put kids in these big houses with multi-residents? Where do you put kids in high-density houses? Dogs, cats, and all the things that we grow up with? Beer and pizza, bicycle-riding millennials are not the now or the future of Wheat Ridge. Let's leave our housing for real people and for families. Let's preserve our Wheat Ridge culture and our Wheat Ridge living and stop the crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Michael Epsin and Ovaro Lazzalde is on deck.
Hi, I guess you'll have to yield my mic.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Epsin. I am a twenty-eight-year resident of Wheat Ridge, and our concern is the historic nature of the R one C neighborhood. Just as an example, the house directly next door to me is a beautiful little brick cottage built in nineteen oh nine. I consider it a very historic house in this part of town. I really think that we need to preserve this area. Just a little bit of background to give you some familiarity with the R one C. R one C only makes up eleven percent of the entire city of Wheat Ridge. So we're not talking about a large area, but we are talking about a historic, historic area that we feel needs to be preserved. In the R one C, we are, we have a minimum lot width of fifty feet. That's approximately the width of two double driveways, to give you an example of the size of the width of these lots. We're allowed to build within this, within five foot of the property line, which only gives you an available forty-foot lot usage. The result that we've had for this was people that want to build houses that are much taller than the residents around them, and they really tear away at the fabric of our community. They do not fit with the cottage life, they don't fit with the neighborhood in general. They are ice-worse, to say the least. When we passed the bulk plane for the R one C last November, council decided that they wanted to separate the bulk plane from a height restriction. We feel that the bulk plane is a step in the right direction, but for this particular neighborhood, with these small cottages, we feel that a twenty-five-foot height limitation is suitable for the R one C. We feel that this will maintain the continuity of our neighborhood look and the continuity of our community within the neighborhood. We'd also like to see the bulk plane extended to the R two for the, the area just to the north of us from the R one C. We're pretty much speaking about what I consider the historic area east of Wadsworth in Wheat Ridge. It's not to say that we want to ignore our people that are on the west side, but we haven't seen the scrapes and the redevelopment on that side of the street that we're seeing within these old neighborhoods. The third item on my list is, we've heard a lot of talk about rezoning of lots in our neighborhoods to take single or multiple lots and create multiple family units in those. The neighborhood organization that I work with is completely opposed to multiple family units for several different reasons. Traffic flow being the highest among them. We play a game that I call hide-and-seek on these narrow streets. Two full-size vehicles are not allowed to pass each other on most of these when there's parking on both sides, so one person has to pull over into a small area and let the other car pass. While that is a little bit difficult for the residents in the neighborhood, we feel that it really is, it jeopardizes the citizens with emergency services. If we get an increased density of parking and residents in these neighborhoods, there's really no way efficiently for ambulances and fire trucks to get through these neighborhoods into a neighborhood that has an aging population and needs these services on a regular basis. So to wrap up, we consider this historic area, we actually think that by eliminating the tower houses and maintaining the cottages, that will increase property values in the long run, much like it did in the Bonnie Bay area in Denver. They limited their large houses, and it and it has become a beautiful cottage community and is maintained that way. It's increased property values. We've actually seen decreased property values in the houses that are directly next to these large houses. For example, in my neighborhood, we built one on 2035 Chase, and the resident next door was so disgusted with the tall house next door, she basically walked out of her front yard and saw a three-story building going up five feet from her property line, sold her house, and the real estate agent said that she took a 20% loss on the sale of her house because of that large house that was right next to her. She's no longer a resident of Wheat Ridge. Because of these houses being built, she left and moved into the Denver area. So I'd like to thank you all for your time. I'd like to encourage you to please maintain our cottage neighborhood, and please look at a 25-foot height limit for the R1C. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Epsin. Victoria Mendoza and Steve Kenny on deck.
Hi, my name is Victoria Mendoza, and I am a seven-year resident in Wheat Ridge. I am in RC1. I am 3021 Chase. And I am the little cute bungalow that's sitting next to the empty lot with the red container that has been sitting there for a couple of years. And I am here today to ask the council members to set the height limit of the new residential buildings in the RC1 zone in Wheat Ridge to 25 feet. I am a professional that chose to live in Wheat Ridge, among many things, because of vibrant neighborhood and its government, one that listens to the community and takes in consideration all the factors that make Wheat Ridge a very desirable place to live beyond taxes and revenue. My request of a height limit of 25 feet for RC new buildings comes from caring to keep the visual integrity at my neighborhood, and specifically to make sure that that empty lot that sits south of my home gets built as a single residential building that doesn't make my home a place that loses sun, privacy, character, which makes me bring the issue of rezoning in RC1. This is a decision that should consider much more than density and taxes. Should consider neighborhoods, neighbors, and the living characteristics of the streets. I want to see our government to help us to live better in Wheat Ridge, not just to have to deal with or put up with. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendoza. Steve Kenny and Bob Brazel. I'm not going to get that. Brazel on deck. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Kenny. I live at 2870 Newland. I've been a Wheat Ridge resident for about four years. I've been very actively involved in Wheat Ridge and friends and clients here for many decades. Two decades, not many decades. I think I come to this with a little bit different perspective than a few of the things that I've heard this evening. I am first not a fan of tower houses. I do think that we have a whole lot of moving parts here that we need to pay attention to. The moving parts include, but are certainly not limited to, the fact that we have not completed the ADU discussion here. And that absolutely has implications to what we're talking about in the context of this discussion. And there are many, many people who have boomerang kids, who have total failure-to-launch kids, who have multi-generational situations, or maybe aging and don't want to be in a two-story house and may be a lot better off in an ADU attached to a garage, which in this case doesn't have implications with bulk plane, but it all plays together. We have very rapidly demographic... very rapidly changing demographics in the entire metro area, and it is going to happen here whether we like it or not. And we have a... we have a potential loss in property rights, which I think is a big and scary thing as we're talking about this discussion. It's very important for us to recognize that change is scary, but change is also inevitable, and we need to embrace it in a way that's going to work for everyone, that's not going to be selfish in saying, "No, stop. This community was built in 1957, and it's going to stay as if it's 1957 forever." That doesn't work. That does not make for a healthy community. So I would challenge us to step back and look at this from a slightly different perspective. And that perspective might be something that we sometimes refer to as forms-based zoning, which would say, we look at something, and we look at it in the context in which it is in. So if you have a bunch of single-story 1920s bungalows, then in that area, the forms-based zoning will allow somebody to redevelop a parcel there, and it might need to sort of take on that look and feel of a bungalow, and maybe it can be a story and a half or two stories. You don't go three stories. But we can't make a blanket statement for a big section and make that work for everybody. And we can't do that without diminishing property rights. We can't do that without potential lawsuits. And we can't do that in a community that really needs to be changing as the world is changing too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Bob Brazel and Sundari Kraft on deck.
Well, this issue about the bulk plane standards in your survey that you put out for everybody to do on the city website, I filled it out, and I found it to be most confusing and not of much value. The average citizen doesn't understand the questions. I didn't. And I ran and owned two successful businesses, and one was a real estate company. The question you need to ask is, do you want someone to be able to build a house next to yours that is three stories tall, has a deck on top that looks down in your backyard, blocks your view, invades your privacy? I think the answer would be more representative of how people feel in this city, who are the people who own this city. You need to be straightforward and honest with the people of this city. That's the way we expect from all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Sundari Kraft and Dorothy Archer on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Sundari Kraft. I live at 3495 Ames Street. I am zoned R2. So I am grateful to talk to you tonight. I wanted to talk just a little bit about inclusivity as it relates to what we're talking about with regards to housing and also the process. I'm a little bit of a process geek, and so I end up talking about that wherever I go. I think that it's really important that whenever we are on the cusp or even considering making decisions that are going to affect thousands of people in our community, that we really try to be as inclusive as possible. I also like to talk about privilege as it relates to the process and to meetings like the meeting that we're having tonight. I think it's really wonderful that we all care so much to take time out of our schedules and come tonight. I had knee surgery a few days ago, and I told my husband, "I'm still coming. I'm going to come, even if I'm hobbling here." But there's a lot of privilege in being able to come to this meeting. There are people who can't come to evening meetings because they're working or they're caring for young children or they have second-shift jobs or they have sick family members at home, on and on and on. And so I think it's always important to remember that we're never going to come out of a meeting like this with any sort of a mandate from the community that we need to do everything we can to reach out and get as much diversity from our full Wheat Ridge community as we can. I hear a lot from people about what we don't want to import from Denver. That comes up a lot in meetings, right? We're Wheat Ridge, we're not Denver. And as someone who moved from Denver about four years ago, there are some things that I don't want to import from Denver in Wheat Ridge. One of them is the phenomenon whereby a small group of very committed, very well-informed and dedicated citizens anoint themselves as the voice of the neighborhood. And they say, "We are the voice of the neighborhood. We are telling you what the neighborhood wants." That happens a lot in Denver, and it's just not true. We have a lot of different people here. There's also, in Denver, I really saw a very restrictive, non-inclusive stance toward modern architecture. My house was built in 1957. It's not modern, but I think we have to think about what kind of diverse community we want to have. So what I value in this conversation is I really value affordable housing above all. I want to make sure we're not doing anything that would restrict that moving forward. I value living a diverse community, appropriate density that would allow for transit and vibrant local businesses. And I just want to make sure we're not taking a broad-brush approach, that we're being really thoughtful and deliberate. My understanding is that we're... let's say, I wrote a note here that we're apparently on the cusp of looking at the neighborhood revitalization strategy that's due to be revised in 2018. And if that's true, that might be a really great vehicle for facilitating this conversation and talking about what kind of communities do we want to have in a collaborative way and building our policies out of that rather than being reactive to a small concern. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Dorothy Archer and Benny Gonzalez on deck.
My name is Dorothy Archer, 3640 Marshall Street, Wheat Ridge. Good evening, mayor, council, and citizens. I speak one more time and ask for your indulgence in being considerate to 50, 75, and 100-foot frontages. Three stories is not even thinkable. In fact, even a two-story on a 50-foot is not thinkable. The 15-foot bulk plane is out of line for R1C, totally out of line. My block alone, and my house is a 1950s, it'll stand for probably another 50 or 60 years. Well-built. It is not demolished. It is not falling apart. I don't even have five feet on either side of my house. If my neighbors scraped, I would be probably a three-story house eight feet from my windows. I'm not against three-story houses, not in any sense of the world. If you have a half an acre or an acre of land, go for it. But when you come to residential areas who have been here for the past 50, 60, 70 years, it's not okay to do damage to these people. Again, I enforce how important it is to consider affordable housing. My street alone, the last five houses that have sold have been to millennials, caring millennials, who have paid between $300 and $350 a square foot. So I don't think we're looking at anything diminishing in value or being degrading to Wheat Ridge. Please be considerate. I know this is going to take a long time for study. You're not going to arrive at anything tonight. But when we get to R1C, R3, please consider these same recommendations. R1, R2, and I had mentioned before that R2 has about 1,000 families on East Wheat Ridge, many who have small lots. I think we have to be considerate of protecting the people who are here, who have supported Wheat Ridge and continue to care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Archer. Benny Gonzalez and Kim Calamino on deck.
Hello, City Council, mayor, citizens. Benny Gonzalez, 3145 Eaton Street. Been a resident since 2012. And let me start by saying the main reason that we decided to move, my wife and I, to Wheat Ridge is because of the character in the neighborhood of the east Wheat Ridge in the R1C zone, which is not more than 1,000 houses. Only, what, 11% did you say? Of the whole city of Wheat Ridge. And that's what I want to address, is that 11%. The R1Cs, not the R2s, 3s, 4s, or whatever the others may be. But I live in the R1C, and I would like to also see the 25-foot height restriction on any new builds. Now, you can build a nice-quality home on a 25-foot height restriction. You can use some quality materials and make a home that is very well-built, like some of the older ones that... like I live in, a 1940 home, very well-built, sturdy. And so it's not over 1,000 families or 1,000 homes. But I am one of the people that have lost, like, half of my view of the mountains. One of the reasons why I chose where I live is because I could see the mountains. Well, now there is a three-story, 35-foot square-looking house. I'm not against square-looking houses. I'm not against three stories. But in the neighborhood that we live in or that I live in, I am kind of against that. It just took away the character of the block behind me, my view. And so I would like to see a 25-foot height restriction in our neighborhood, too, like a lot of our citizens have expressed, to preserve our neighborhood, our quality of life. Let's not take away the sun that someone may really enjoy in their backyard. Let's not take away the privacy that a three-story house with a deck looking down at all their neighbors... let's not take away that privacy. That's diminishing the quality of life in the Wheat Ridge area, if you ask me. So that's... I guess that's about it that I have to say right now. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, mayor, citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Kim Calamino and Cheryl Adamson on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Kim Calamino, 4070 Dover Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Bulk plane setbacks, height restrictions, and potential architectural design requirements are complicated and interactive. There is no one-size-fits-all that will properly serve the community, future infill, or new development. We should not take a reactionary approach but provide the community ample time to consider options and implications. This can best be done during the revision of the neighborhood revitalization strategy, which I believe council will be taking up in the next year. We should craft a policy encompassing and recognizing the distinctions between zone districts so we can shape the city we wish to build, providing diverse housing options for diverse populations while acknowledging our city's character. When it comes time for these in-depth conversations, I would encourage staff to provide visual aids that allow comparison of the range of situations and potential effects of the various potential regulations so the public can clearly visualize impacts. These are complicated issues that cannot, should not, be addressed ad hoc or urgently or one-size-fits-all. Please take a deliberative and in-depth-studied approach to any changes that you make to bulk plane, zoning regulations, or architectural standards. And if I might, take a moment to change hats and speak as a member of the West Chamber, I want to remind all of our elected officials that you're invited to join the West Chamber and the Jefferson County Business Lobby at a meet-and-greet with your citizens and business owners at the Rockley... Rockley... I want to say Rockley Recital Hall. That's correct, Recital Hall, on November 29th from 5:30 to 7:30. And citizens are invited to attend, too. So please join us and have an informal time to speak with your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calamino. Cheryl Adamson and Al Gallo on deck.
I'm Cheryl Merkel-Adamson, and my family has been in Wheat Ridge... well, I've been here for 67 years. And so I've seen it change from Wadsworth being a two-lane road with an irrigation ditch on each side to certainly what we have now. And I am greatly concerned about the height of houses being built in North Denver that I see. My friend lives at 45th and Tennyson, and I can't even find her house. My friend lives at 45th and Tennyson, and I can't even find her house. It's between two of these big, huge, square houses. And they don't even get sun for their garden, to say nothing of the privacy, and I am greatly concerned about that happening in Wheat Ridge where I have lived my entire life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adamson. Mr. Gallo.
Looks like I'm going to be the last one. I live at 6685 West 30th Avenue in District 1, and, I'm sorry. Oh, Al Gallo. So, I kind of come with a different perspective. I'm going to dovetail on what a couple people spoke about. I did recently just move from Denver, and I was actively involved when Denver was rolling out their new zoning, and how they broke everything down as urban edge, urban, Main Street, the whole nine yards. And it took them years to craft it, and unfortunately, when they rolled it out, it had holes in it. And that's what the developers took advantage of, and I think that's what a lot of people are complaining about, when they go look at Tennyson Street and see these big buildings. It was those holes that the developers were able to take advantage of. When we had moved to the Berkeley neighborhood, just on the other side of Sheridan, we were the youngest couple on the block. We had bought an 100-year-old house, and so by the time we left just last year, we were probably the oldest couple on that same block. The homes had transitioned to younger people, and if you look at the demographics of Wheat Ridge, you got, it's an older population, and it's going to become more younger. So you have to anticipate what's going to be happening with the younger people and what their wants are. Houses that were built 50, 60 years ago aren't exactly what young people want these days, or new homeowners, or people who are moving up from a duplex into a newer home. These are all complicated decisions. I do believe what Steve had mentioned about ADUs, that definitely needs to be part of this conversation. As people do transition throughout their life, it gives them options that they currently wouldn't have. And one unspoken truth, and I think we've kind of touched on it, a couple speakers have touched on it, is, and it truly is an unspoken truth, is higher prices for homes mean higher taxes, so Wheat Ridge technically gets the beneficiary of that piece. So when we talk about affordable housing, well, how does that affect Wheat Ridge? And what does the city of Wheat Ridge want to have in respect of affordable housing, particularly when it comes into the tax piece? So thank you very much, and I also want to welcome all the new council people. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Our next speaker is Mr. Raleigh Sorrentino.
Good evening, Raleigh Sorrentino, 4175 Teller Street. I have a story I'd like to share. Oh, 65, 70 years ago, a young family moved to Wheat Ridge from Denver. They had two young children, one was a teenager and one was about five years old. They moved into a house in Wheat Ridge, and something happened the first morning. The mother herself was a artist and appreciative of the art world and the beauty, et cetera. And the first morning, the five-year-old came to the dining, to the kitchen table and says, "Mom," in his new bedroom, she says, "I looked out the window last night and I saw stars instead of a lousy old brick wall." That woman told that story over 1,000 times in her life about the move to Wheat Ridge, wherein her son looked out the window and saw stars in lieu of a lousy old brick wall. That little boy was me, and I would hope you guys would take this into consideration when you start blocking off the windows of children in their rooms. And I would hope and pray that this new city council could help address this ongoing war between the city staff and the people of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino. That is all of the names that I have on my list. Is there anyone here who's not on the list who would like to speak on this item? All right, and I believe our clerk has received a piece of correspondence with regard to this item?
This was delivered to the clerk's office, and there is a handout that goes with it that should be passed to all of the council. This is just a short note from Mr. Tom Slattery, who apparently couldn't be here tonight. And this, I'll just read his letter. "To Wheat Ridge City Council, I urge council to make a separate and timely revision of height and bulk requirements in R1, R2, and R2A zone districts. I consider this matter to be in every way as urgent as was the recent action on bulk plane taken for R1C and R3 districts. In no way should it be deferred and included in the 2018 Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. Rather, it should be given separate zoning action. Please refer to the attached study showing the potential effect of three-story flat-roof buildings in these zoning districts. Not only is the height and bulk offensive and incompatible with the general high quality of these neighborhoods, but such structures can be easily, illegally, and surreptitiously converted to multifamily units. I request that the mayor and each council member be furnished a copy of this study. This matter is of far greater importance in R1 and R2 districts than it was in the R1C and R3 districts because the larger the lot, the greater height and bulk that is possible under the present bulk plane standard. I request that council take timely action on this matter and not defer it to 2018 or have it studied to the point of inaction." This is from Tom Slattery, and his address is 6869 West 32nd Avenue.
Okay, one more time, anybody else not get a chance to speak? Okay, our first item on the agenda is staff reports. Mr. Goff?
We have none this evening.
No staff reports. Our second item on the agenda is elected official reports. Is there any elected officials that has a report to make tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, which we've already dispensed with, so we're ready for item number four. This is the residential development standards, bulk plane, building heights, et cetera. Mr. Johnstone, do we have a staff report on this?
We do, just a brief one. A couple handouts first. We're going to talk principally about the survey results that the residential bulk plane survey that was conducted over the last couple of weeks, that closed last night at 11:59, and we pulled together some summary data this morning that we're going to show to you for the first time, so kind of a lot to absorb, but we'll do our best. So two handouts, one that gives kind of all the data, and then one that's a one-pager, it's actually a two-pager, it's front and back, that gives a little bit of summary data from our first blush. We do have extra copies, so we can put them at the back table when council has theirs, and they can, the public might have to share a little bit, but we've got quite a few extra handouts. So you're all very well aware that residential bulk plane has been a topic of discussion for the city and for city council over the past year or so. I included a history of kind of past council actions and discussions in your staff report, so I won't go over that right now, except perhaps to note that, you know, there was quite a bit of opportunity for public input, so we encourage that to continue, but just wanted to acknowledge that we have heard some of these comments along the way when council adopted the bulk plane regulations back in November of last year. Ultimately, in November of last year, city council did adopt residential bulk plane requirements in the R1C and for single-family homes in R3, and those, of course, are zoning districts that are prevalent on the east side of town. And often, where you have smaller lots and narrower lots, and that was really, I think, the rationale for why it was applied only in those areas. So the regulations have been in place for about a year. We actually have had three single-family homes that have been permitted in that regulatory environment, two that just have foundations port at this point, and then one, interestingly, at 2942 Eaton Street, that is substantially complete. So we did send out an email on Friday letting the mayor and council know about that, so perhaps you had a chance to take a look at that and see how that, how residential development is occurring in this kind of new regulatory environment. Just a couple notes on that structure. The practical effect of the bulk plane regulations that council adopted on that lot were such that on the two-story portion of the building, the effective setback was seven feet, 10 inches, which would have otherwise been five feet as the minimum setback, and the effective setback for the three-story portion of the building was 13 feet, 9 inches. So the residential bulk plane standards that council adopted do in fact require those taller portions of the building to be setback further from the property lines than was currently the case, or was previously the case, with just a five-foot setback requirement. That said, obviously, the topic continues to be a discussion point for the community. As a result of that, your October 23rd meeting, staff-directed, or council-directed staff, rather, to develop with council input on the questions, a residential bulk plane survey mechanism that we made available on the city's website, effective, I think, November 3rd, Friday, November 3rd, we went live, and as I noted, we just closed that survey at midnight last night, so we're just now digesting the data. We did give council an opportunity to communicate the location of that survey to your constituents. We also posted the link, obviously, on the city's website and did some pushing out of it on the city's Facebook page as well. So that was kind of our effort to get as much input as possible. I think safe to say the survey is not intended or represented to be scientific. The questions were developed very quickly, not with input from a professional surveying firm that often, you know, take a very hard look at the wording on questions in a survey to make sure that they're unbiased. So I hear some feedback that people don't think the survey was scientific or may have biases built into it. That certainly was not our intent, and we certainly tried to get as much educational component into that survey as possible, because bulk plane is a complicated concept and not one that necessarily most laypeople are familiar with on a day-by-day basis. But admittedly, you know, education is an important part of this conversation, and we tried to get some of that into the SurveyMonkey survey tool. It, of course, was also not administered in a scientific sample way, right? So we didn't go out and do a random sampling of Wheat Ridge households, or Wheat Ridge property owners, or any mechanism like that that would be justifiable as a scientific sampling method. So two big caveats to just kind of tee up the discussion as we look at the data. We are providing, as I've handed out the raw data to city council, and we do have some preliminary kind of observations, I guess, though I'm sure council will have plenty of your own as well, which is the purpose for tonight's meeting. But if we could go over the one, the two-page or the two-sided sheet to maybe just a few things that stood out to us as some of the data that grabbed our attention. We thought we had pretty good participation, 286 survey respondents, not all of those fully finished the survey, but a good amount of participation. Not surprisingly, perhaps, District 1 was very well represented, and you can see that on the second page, that they were by far the greatest districts in terms of participation, and certainly, you know, that's where this issue seems to be coming up most for the community right now. I think it's nice to note that 64% of people support, generally support, the bulk plane regulations. So kudos to council for at least starting to get, I think, something right from your constituents' perspective in adopting those last year. I think the, interestingly also because of some of the questions that have come up, when we asked, "Do you think the bulk plane regulations in R1C and R3 are strict enough?" we got almost half of the people that said, "I don't know," right? So there is an acknowledgement that this is a complicated issue and may require more education. 53% thought that bulk plane regulations might apply in residential zone districts throughout the city, which was something that was discussed last year when council adopted the bulk planes initially, but not a direction that you wanted to go. And we can talk substantively more about that kind of approach as city council moves forward, some of the pros and cons of that. More, not real clear direction as to what specific zone districts or areas of the city would be most appropriate. Again, that being a fairly complicated issue and not one easily to just kind of randomly answer as part of a survey without more education. Good support for some limitations on the massing of buildings. Massing can be limited by lot coverage, it can be limited by something called a floor-area ratio concept. We showed some graphics of how you can limit massing, and certainly, it's limited by our bulk plane approach, right? So citizens support the notion of limiting the massing of building on residential lots in proportion to the size of those lots. So less mass of buildings on smaller lots is a concept people support. Some things that were not supported in the survey, we asked whether it would be appropriate to consider single-family residential architectural standards, and over 70% of people said they don't support that. We do, as a side note, have architectural standards in place for all of our commercial development, all of our industrial development, and all of our multifamily development. So those areas of the city are certainly covered by that, but people weren't feeling that we should go down the road of doing that for single-family and duplex homes. In terms of lowering the maximum, reducing the maximum height that's allowed for some portion of residential lots in the city, 50% didn't support that, about 33.5% did, and 16% were neutral. So generally, not a support for that, but certainly mixed results. There is some support for that. And then if you dive down deeper into there, I think there's just where you might do that if you wanted to lower maximum height, just not a lot of clear direction there. There were a lot of different options of what your answer could be, and no clear consensus as to what direction one would head on that. Two other questions regarding the ability to just kind of flat-out build two-story or three-story homes. Clearly, the survey respondents did not want to limit people's ability to do two-story homes. So 84% of the people felt that two-story homes are appropriate in, you know, most residential areas of the city of Wheat Ridge. For single-family and duplexes, should there be limitations on three-story homes? There was a slight majority at 42% that said yes, but notably, 38% said no. So really, pretty mixed results on that as well, and 20% said maybe. So that's kind of some of the raw results that we saw. A few initial observations, I guess, I think I probably straightened most of them, but, you know, potentially expanding the breadth of the applicability of bulk plane is something that a majority of the survey respondents were interested in, so that's something that council could take into consideration. Again, there is support for regulating the massing of houses relative to the size of the lot that they're on. Arguably, we're doing that already, but could we do it in other ways? Perhaps. We do it with, currently with setbacks, we do it with a maximum lot coverage, we do it now in R1C and R3 with the bulk plane standards. But certainly, there are opportunities to do it in other ways and in more parts of the city as well. Seems to me there's not support for developing residential standards, architectural standards for single-family and duplex homes. And of course, all these comments, goes without saying, should be prefaced by the fact that we're not trying to represent that this is the definitive, you know, data point that we should march forward from, but it's the data point that we have to talk about this evening. And in regards to the ability to do two-story homes, pretty clear direction that people think that's a very reasonable right for all single-family lots in the city, and then very much more mixed results when it comes to whether we should be able to do that, whether you should restrict people's ability to do three-story homes. In our staff report to you, we'd given you a few options of what next steps might be moving forward. We're eager to hear your input tonight. You know, we suggested potentially a subsequent study session where everyone could dive a little deeper into this data and then discuss again, because there is a fair amount to absorb. We could do a more robust survey. We could, you know, work with a professional surveying firm. We could, you know, work with a professional surveying firm, potentially an architectural support, support team as well, and do a standalone survey that we could, you know, use a survey mechanism that would be statistically valid and, and give us maybe even better data. We could also incorporate certain aspects of this in our annual citizen, or biannual citizen survey. This is our year to do that survey, it's been budgeted, and we could add some questions on this topic as part of that survey since that is a statistically valid survey. As has been suggested by some people at the podium tonight, we could make this part of the larger discussion that we anticipate this year, the kind of look back and look forward on the neighborhood revitalization strategy, which is over ten years old now, and a high priority on council's kind of future agenda to look at what, what we've succeeded in and what else is left to do to, to implement the, the various recommendations from that important policy document that is still very much alive and living today. We also suggested that if, if, if council thinks that, that what they've heard here doesn't require further action, you know, we don't necessarily have to continue these talks if, if you feel like the bulk plan that you adopted and where you adopted is, is in the appropriate locations and don't need to, to discuss this further. Those are all, I think, very legitimate options. I, I think, I, I would certainly think that we, you know, when we talk about broadening the applicability of residential bulk plan, you know, again, if you guys want to talk about that substantively this evening, we had, we had made that recommendation as a staff back during the process in twenty-seventeen, or twenty-sixteen, excuse me, whereby, as, as you apply it on larger lots, it doesn't have as much impact because those lots are just bigger and that, the, the impact on those bigger lots is, is potentially not great. That said, one argument in favor of that is if you have a larger lot, but maybe with a non-conforming setback, so you have a, a building that, that historically was built close to a property line, you may not want to, you may want to restrict the ability to expand that with a three-story house that's in violation of that type of a non-conforming setback. But we can talk more about that if that's of, of interest to city council. And as also has been noted, I think, as part of any further discussions about the NRS, a few people at the podium mentioned ADUs. I think we just need to be mindful of moving forward, you know, making sure that we're aligning this effort with council's other priorities so that we make sure we have the resources to kind of move forward on, on everything that is a high priority to you. As was noted during the 2016 process, when discussions were made regarding the possibility of making this a larger effort, there were some suggestions of looking at neighborhood character districts and defining different parts of the city by architectural style or, you know, bungalow neighborhoods. It's been, it's been described as a cottage neighborhood. Those are all certainly interesting and, and possible efforts. They're significant efforts and would require, you know, budget for outside resources to support those efforts, and again, a kind of a realignment of our priorities. So, we just want to be mindful of, of how much, how deep we dive into this and what different regards, and how that, you know, prioritizes other things that are going on for the city. And that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. John Stones. I had one sort of housekeeping in your notes here. Talking about the efforts to pass the bulk plan, you have a sentence that says, "Subsequently, a special city council meeting was called on November twel- twelve, twenty-first, 2016, where an emergency ordinance was approved by a seven-to-one vote." Is that, is that where we are now in an, an emergency ordinance?
No, it was, it was passed as an emergency because the, the timing of wanting to get the bulk plan regulations in place was such that the, the ninety-day temporary ordinance was expiring, so council decided to adopt it by emergency, so there wasn't kind of a gap where people could apply for a permit for something that wouldn't be subject to the, the bulk plan requirements. So, the, the initial step was to adopt a ninety-day temporary ordinance.
Okay.
And then we did some more work with council over the intervening ninety days to, to get that permanent ordinance in place, but it needed to be adopted by emergency, so there wasn't kind of a gap in coverage.
My bad, I was thinking about emergency as temporary, but that's, I'm, I'm clear now, thank you. Well, let's open it up for discussion. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Ken, that was a nice job, and I think you explained what I've been able to see here, just looking through it very nicely. As we pursue what our efforts here in trying to preserve the basic character of our city, I think there's a couple of things we need to do to make sure we don't get stuck in a box in our thinking. And I'm just throwing this out right now just to try and open up the possibilities. Firstly, we have existing neighborhoods, and those neighborhoods have character. Our developments west of Seventy and north of I-70 don't, particularly on those plots, have existing neighborhoods. So, that's where we may choose to use a different set of standards. As of, for instance, I think it was called Fireside, Patrick, the subdivision there by Color Strand, that's got some big houses, but they've kind of created their own, their own character in that neighborhood, and we have a chance to allow for some different diversity that way in, in, in new areas that aren't encroaching into an existing neighborhood, that are not infill per se inside an, an existing neighborhood. What we would have to be careful of there is just buffer zones perhaps, where you don't have a, all of a sudden boom at somebody's back fence. When we inherited, we inherited a lot of these issues right now because we didn't incorporate until around sixty-eight. So, a lot of these houses were built just as part of unincorporated Jefferson County, so they, we, they, they came in. But we do have a chance now to control our own future in some of the new developments, and we don't have many of them. I mean, we don't have a lot of big areas left to develop, but we can craft what we think the character, what would be a fitting character for those new neighborhoods and how they fit in with, A, our diversity, and then B, our overall claim to fame as being a little bit of a rural quiet oasis in the middle of the raging storm of urban, the urban fast city life. I mean, I think that's a lot of our draw-out here is that, you know, we've had that reputation in the past, that you don't have to get caught up in the, the fast lane of being in a big city. So, as we do this, now, we don't have to necessarily look at just bulk plan in all of these new areas. As Ken mentioned, there's other ways to control the, the character of the housing other than just that one tool, and we may have to consider different tools, for instance, like at the light rail station, and maybe even a different tool out at the crossing, out, you know, west of I-70 there at the old Cabela's site. So, I just would encourage us to keep an open mind that way, is that, as a lot of the speakers mentioned, and I really appreciate all your comments tonight, one size may not fit all. So, let's not try to get bogged down in fighting just for bulk plan, but for common-sense solutions that fit different places in the city, and we, we may end up creating some whole new zoning issues that are applicable in different parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ann.
Thank you. And thanks, staff, too, for helping with the survey, gathering all the information and bringing it all to us.
Those, too.
And thank all the citizen comments out there, too. Let me just cut to the chase. I do support considering adding a portion of this to the citizen survey that we're going to be doing, because it's already put into the budget, so we can add some of those questions into that. I would also like to, I mean, this is a big undertaking, and I don't think we can resolve all this tonight, so I would support adding this to the NRS strategy study that we're going to do. My only concern is while we're going through this process, trying to figure out what we're going to do in our, in our city, is the eastern part of Wheat Ridge here in those bungalows. So, while this may take six months, this could take a year, meanwhile, structures could be going up over there and kind of just, you know, not preserving the character. So, we had a lot of citizens that brought up requesting a twenty-five-foot height restriction in the R1C for that area. I would like us to really consider that while we're moving forward and having the discussions that we need to have to kind of get more input in, and to resolve this. So, like I said, I would support, you know, adding questions to the survey, deferring some of this to the study we're going to do with the NRS, but I really would like us to discuss the height restriction in the R1C area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis.
So, I've had several folks call me, and also I've met with some folks about this issue, and I think it is something, I think, a lot of folks commented today and over the phone, that it's not, and even echoing what Ms. Duran said, I don't think it is a decision that we could make overnight. I do think we need to include it in our, our neighborhood strategy moving forward. And I do think, you know, some comments that were said tonight, I do think we need to address the ADUs because we have a lot of non-conforming ADUs in our city, and we have a lot of people in limbo on if that is something our city's going to accept or not. So, I think it needs to, I, I don't want to get so broad that, you know, as, as Mr. Johnstone was discussing, that it's like, be careful because we only have so much staff, and if you guys, you know, bite off a big chunk, we're not going to be able to do anything. Be, you know, thoughtful in the chunks that you bite off. But I think the ADUs is something we need to discuss, I think this bulk plan issue is something to discuss. I, I happened to speak to a gentleman in District One, Mr. Ann, I'm not sure, I know he, he, I think he called both of you guys, Janice. But his concern was, was that we kind of set the guidelines last year for the bulk plan with the seventeen feet and, and, you know, with the, or the fifteen feet, the setbacks and those types of things, and he's paid money, he's paid developers, or architects, and now it's like we're going to change the game on him. And so, I think that although we did take action last year on to try to address so that we don't have, you know, three-foot-tall box monster homes, I think it's hard to kind of, now this year, we're going to play a new game, and now we're changing it again on you. I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's something we can do quickly. I do think it's something from a strategy perspective. I'm, I'm happy to support if this is a cottage neighborhood and those types of things, but I think it is something thoughtfully as a city council with the help of Mr. Johnstone's department and Mr. Johnstone, that we need to kind of be thoughtful on how we're going to do it. But I think just to, to kind of come up with some flat, you know, we're only going to do this and, and those types of things at this point, I don't think is fair to anyone because we already kind of set some guidelines last year, and there are people that are adhering to those guidelines and have committed to those guidelines. There's also people that have bought homes knowing that here's the guidelines, and so, yes, I will be able to do these things, and now we're going to change the game on them. So, I mean, I appreciate everyone who spoke today, I appreciate the people that took the survey, but I do think that it's something that needs a lot more thoughtful discussion, which I think our community's happy to be a part of, and I know the council's happy to be a part of, and so that's what I would recommend, is that we, you know, engage in some more meaningful discussions and get some ideas and some plans.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Well, I, I support a lot of what Christie said. I think, as you, you know, I, I don't think this study is valid in any case, but despite that, what people seem to be saying is they think the existing standards are fine. There seem to be a very strong majority for the existing bulk plan rules. They also, also supported restricting massing in some way, and I can, I can certainly understand that. They didn't support lowering height, so that's something to keep in mind. Bottom line here, as I see this, those who responded thought what we had already was doing fine. But secondly, going back to what other, other people said, I think Mr. Massey, I don't know, I don't know his name now, I think he said something very important, and that is the, the questions in the survey were put together very rapidly at our behest, so I'm not, I'm certainly not blaming anybody. And they were almost draconian in their technicality because this is a very technical subject. So, I, I do think that the questions themselves were, were difficult to, to answer. And there are, if there are any problems with our existing bulk clean rec- uh, uh, rules, it would be what Mr. Hill said, and that's the sloping lot lines, which we've talked about before. But bottom line for me is, I don't want to do anything on this that doesn't take a holistic approach, because there is the question of, of ADUs, which is an important topic to a lot of people that we have not fully come to a, any kind of agreement at all on. There's also the Airbnb issue that might have some, some relevance here. I just don't think we're ready to do anything on this. So, I would support having discussions along the line amongst ourselves about this issue as a holistic matter before we take any action of any kind.
Thank you. Additional comments, Ms. Hoppe.
I agree with a lot of the comments that are, that have been said tonight, and I'd like to say thanks to all of the citizens who came out this evening. I agree that, yes, we should put some of this in the citizen survey, and I support that. I agree that, yes, we should look at updating our NRS and the strategies through that. Do I, I absolutely agree we need to finish the ADU conversation. Do I think that it all has to be done together as one big pie? Maybe not necessarily, but I do think that we need to not have a blanket look at zoning and blanket, and put out just a blanket zoning height or mass or density. And I think that if we're going to look at height, then we need to look at height everywhere, and it needs to come out of our charter, and it needs to go into our zoning the way it's done in everywhere but two other places in Colorado. There are places in our community where we could stand to have higher restrictions, where we would actually benefit to have higher restrictions, and one of them would be at the Sprouts area, where we have something that is the only thing that is, that is allowed to not apply to the height in the city charter, which is adult community, retirement village, something like that. That's the only thing that is allowed to not follow the height that's in the charter. That could have been a sales tax generating mixed-use development. And so, those kinds of things is what we get caught in our charter, where we didn't re- even realize, where we started getting caught in our charter because, you know, some of the developers realized, hey, they have just a straight-up thirty-five feet. All you have to do is do the setbacks. Hey, yeah, let's get on it, let's jump on that. And luckily, we were able to get the bulk plan in there before, before it went rampant. But there are things that are in our charter that probably need to be updated and looked at so that we don't end up caught like that. And so, I think that if we're going to have the height discussion, then we need to have an absolute height discussion. We need to have an ADU, an NRS, we need to have a zoning discussion, so we need to have them all. Do they all have to be together? Maybe not necessarily, maybe we take them out bit by bit so we can get them done a little bit at a time, but I think that it's important that, that we keep in mind that we can't just throw a blanket across at all.
Thank you. Let me see if there are any other, any other people that would like to, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important along the lines of Ms. Hoppe as, as it relates to parsing this out and having these discussions, as important as they are in sort of individual discussions so that we're not muddling- so that we're not muddling the waters relative to these very important individual discussions. Because an ADU discussion is separate and different from a bulk plane discussion. As much as they do deal with much of the same structures and the same property rights issues, I think that there are a variety of different issues that need to be dealt with differently. And as it relates to the neighborhood revitalization strategy, if you look at the 2005 strategy, that's not the place to be discussing bulk plane. And it would, I think, do a disservice to a redo of the neighborhood revitalization strategy if we were to get into the weeds, so to speak, of bulk plane in that redo of the strategy. Because as you look at the neighborhood revitalization strategy, that is a very high-level discussion around what strategies we're going to use to revitalize neighborhoods, not a discussion of what, you know, height and what bulk planes should be on a particular zone district. So those are very specific details and that's not what a strategy document should include. So I'd be opposed to including in that. Now, should there be higher-level vision discussions around that in the NRS? Absolutely. But I think that we need to be parsing these discussions out and having them in parallel. But I don't think we need to, I don't think we also, I don't think we need to be thinking this to death either. We can get along with this and deal with this quickly. And we dealt with this just last year and we were able to come up with a pretty reasonable approach in the R1C districts. So I don't think it would take that much more effort to get back into this and deal with it across all the zone districts and move along with it. But I wouldn't be opposed to having this in the citizen survey. But again, I think that would prolong this issue further than it needs to be. And we can just, we have a lot of property owners and others that are sort of waiting on, what are we going to decide on this? So it needs to be done, I think, in haste, not to the detriment of making sure we're doing it properly. But I think we need to be mindful that as we sit here and discuss this, people are making plans and wanting to do things with their property and they're not able to until we make up our minds as to what direction we're going to go. So I would say we can move forward with a solid discussion on this and come up with a plan and not put this, not kick this can down the road any further.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Need some slack. Sorry, forget it, I'll lean forward. Hold on, there. I'm good. A couple of things, and I'll start at the end and then come back. But I think as it relates to the council direction from the packet, I also am in favor of adding things to the citizen survey. Perhaps, you know, perhaps some on bulk plane and obviously some of the things that have come up, so I'm interested in that. I do believe that this should be brought up in our efforts, as we've discussed over the last two years, about refreshing the neighborhood revitalization strategy. And I want to respond to a couple of things that Zach just said, which I agree with. I don't think we should be talking about bulk plane technicalities inside of the NRS period. It's obviously, you know, twelve-and-a-half feet, fifteen feet, that's not the discussion. However, the overall vision, which I think it is a vision document, is very important in order to understand, I think, some of the complexities. I do think that what we did for R1C and for specific issues that were occurring on the east side of town in relatively localized area were appropriate. I start to get a little bit more concerned without a vision document that starts to be able to contextualize a lot of the issues that we've already talked about tonight, that although I think we could stay with bulk plane, you know, as a general topic, once you start to look at the overall applicability of that across everything and what that means, you're starting to now get into creating perhaps different character and different vision outcomes that we, you know, if we hadn't kind of preceded that with the conversation and a conclusion of the NRS, I think you can start to get into some troubles. So as we go forward, and I think I said this last time, I was not opposed to talking about bulk plane across the whole city, and I'm still not. I am not opposed to talking about additional massing tools that were referenced in tonight's presentation as well. And I think unless there's some serious immediate issues that we know that these things can be relatively untangled and dealt with, I still will prefer to wait until we can conclude some overarching business. And just to use a couple of things that were said by folks who came up and by some of the council members, you know, I think one of the most important things, the thing that I think about quite a bit is, and I'm not saying that anyone isn't, I think a lot of us are, but this is, we talk a lot about loss. We talk about loss of view shed, we talk about loss of sunshine and all of those things. Very important. But there's also loss of property rights. And I think it was well-stated by Steve Kenny tonight, who said that we can't make a blanket statement or code adjustment about or for these areas without taking away property rights. And I think that's, I think that's right. I think that once you, you know, if you're not stepping back and looking at this, I think it's very easy to infringe upon existing property rights. And I think we should be extraordinarily careful about that across the board, which is to say we should honor everyone who's come here, everyone who's not here tonight, whether you were talking about the view and the potential loss of, from that side of things. But we also need to honor the property rights and the potential loss by our actions and our codification of these things to people who have existing property rights right now. And, you know, and I'd be very honest, I'm sensitive for that personally as I think about my neighborhood, my house, and my rights. So I just want to make sure that that's a big part of it. My reference to some of the things that have been said by council, I think Tim stated that, you know, that it needs to be a holistic approach. And I think someone else mentioned the fact that these things are very much intertwined. And I think that's the complexity of everything that we've talked about over the last couple of years, whether it's ADUs or bulk plane or height or our comp plan or our NRS, that these things are very, very much intertwined and entangled and it takes a little bit of time. So I do not want to study something to the point of inaction, as Tom has stated in his letter to us. However, I will restate what has already been stated by several members of this council tonight. We were not inactive. We actually took this up last year and took action last year, both a temporary and an emergency ordinance. So I take a little bit of offense to the fact that we, you know, that someone would say that we were studying things to the point of inaction. No, it's not true. We took action. So, you know, again, happy to continue to talk about this. Want to be very careful, careful about rights, careful about making sure we're taking a holistic approach to this.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
So that was a perfect segue into some of the thoughts that I have had. I really would like to thank everybody for coming out and speaking to this issue. I can tell that a lot of you are very passionate about it and that it is affecting you personally. And for that, I am sorry, and I do appreciate you coming and having your voice heard. With that said, you know, I am very nostalgic to living in this community and preserving the character that I feel I grew up with and would like my children to have in the future. But I also believe that a blanket-type regulation is an egregious violation of private property rights. I think that I would definitely entertain a more in-depth conversation. I would like to see a survey done that is scientifically valid and it has a broader scope as to who is answering and offering their perspective. While we want to maintain and preserve what we have created in Wheat Ridge, we also have to recognize that the future is, you know, tomorrow, it's coming. And as a millennial who lives in this city and is raising their children in this city, I would not be able to afford living here if I were not renting from my parents, renting to own from my parents. And that's something that we have to take into consideration. We don't have affordable housing in Wheat Ridge. And as that discussion, like per that discussion, if we want to have families moving into this city and bringing their children into our schools, we have to recognize that maybe we need to be changing with some of the trends. I don't personally like the box houses that are towering, and I wouldn't want it towering over my home. But, you know, it's a matter of really, my taste isn't, I can't dictate everybody else's taste. It's very different. I have a rustic, country-type taste, but that's not for everyone. Neither is the box-type houses. But I think that if somebody wants to invest in our community and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of even purchasing a property in Wheat Ridge, then they should have the right to do with it as they will. So I think that we should definitely have this conversation. I would definitely like it a part of the citizen survey. When is that biannual survey coming up?
We usually, we typically try to get it out in April, May, to have the results kind of by August, September.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that a lot of us have kind of spoke to the fact that we would like to look at this data and get more information before making a decision, so.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. Mr. Duran had a follow-up?
Yes, thank you, more of a comment. Part of my frustration and part of being offended here is that a year and a half ago, we asked for council to take a broader look and to look at the height restriction in the R1C area. And we were given ninety days and no one wanted to discuss height because they said it was too complicated, would take too long to study and to go through. So part of my frustration right now is, it's a year and a half and it's come back and the citizens have asked for us to look at that height restriction and that particular part of Wheat Ridge. I've already mentioned that I support this going in the survey. I already mentioned that I think we need to update our charter. We need to have the discussion of ADUs and Airbnbs. Those are broader pictures. We do need to just take it one step at a time. And as we're taking it one step at a time and having these mass discussions, which we need to have and we need to give it thoughtful consideration, my concern is District One, where I reside and I represent, in that historical area is going to just be destroyed. So part of my frustration is, I'm not trying to change the game on anybody. I'm not trying to do anything but to hear the voices of the neighbors, the citizens that live in that area. They live there every day and I want us to be mindful of what we're asking. I mean, they're not asking us to tell anybody how to paint their house, how to design their home, how to live, what to do. All they're asking is for us to respect where they live and to consider a height restriction in the R1C. So I'm not trying to paint the city with a broad brush and say we need to do it all this way. I'm just asking you guys to be mindful of that and to please consider doing something about the height in the R1C as we're moving forward here, having further discussions on what we're going to do as a community citywide. Thank you.
Ms. Hoppe?
I also live in District One and reside there every day. And, you know, I have a lot of people calling me and telling me that they have spent a lot of money and then they had to go back and respend their money after we changed the bulk plane on them. R1C does not exist only in District One. It exists throughout our city. I don't think it's okay to throw a blanket height out there for all R1C. Do however, hear all of us saying that they would like questions, or not all of us, but many of us, saying that we would like to have some of these questions put in the citizen survey? So I'd like to ask for a consensus to add the height and density conversation questions into the citizen survey.
Okay, there clearly is a consensus to add the height discussion into the citizen survey? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Fitzgerald?
Could I also ask for a consensus that we have some general questions about ADUs in the survey?
Okay, there's a request to have a consensus to include ADU questions in the citizen survey. How do we feel about that? Consensus passes on that.
So I just have a couple clarifying questions and, because I do think that, I want to go back to some of Ms. Duran's comments, because I do think that although we did not say a flat twenty-five-foot height at our last discussion, we did talk about the bulk plane that would limit certain parts of the house being at certain levels. So I guess my question was, from a year and a half ago, I didn't understand that we left it undecided. I thought we, the bulk plane kind of helped decide the height. And so I guess, is that the case, Mr. Johnstone? I think when we talked about it, it wasn't that we were going to just do flat twenty-five foot, but my understanding is because of the bulk plane, it might allow for a little top den area or something that could be taller. But the bulk plane kind of took care of some of the height by itself.
It certainly did in some regard, but not flat out, right? I mean, you can still have portions of your house that are up to that thirty-five-foot maximum, they just have to be pushed further away from the property lines, right? So the property at 2942 Eaton, that was built and is almost finished under the bulk plane requirements, it was permitted back in March of this year. You see that, you know, as I mentioned in my presentation, the three-story portion of the building effectively is set back thirteen feet nine inches from the side property lines. And even the two-story portion of the building with the bulk plane, given, at least for that house, right, had to be set back seven feet ten inches. So really, the only thing that you can generally build right up to the property line would be a single-story or a very squat, I think, two-story, right at that five-foot minimum. There was not council consensus during the process last year to move forward with any further restrictions on limiting residential building heights.
Yes.
And we did do, we did do research as part of that process and felt like we were generally aligned with some of our neighboring jurisdictions as it pertains to building height. Not completely. I think many of you or many in the room, I'm sure, are well aware that Edgewater has a more restrictive height. It's either twenty-five or twenty-seven, not citywide, but in some of their districts. Denver's heights for portions of Denver that are adjacent to Wheat Ridge vary depending on the zoning district. They're either thirty or thirty-five feet. Lakewood and Narvada both kind of have flat-out residential height limitations of thirty-five feet. So those were the, kind of the benchmarks that we looked at.
And then I just have another question, and I guess this is a question from someone born and raised here, that, I mean, we're calling District One our historic district? I mean, is that truly, I mean, I'm not sure where we're getting that that's our historic area. I mean, is that a true thing? Or I guess I don't, I mean, not to say that we should respect it any more or less with it being historic, but I guess I'm struggling with calling that area historic area unless as a city we're officially calling it is officially a historic area.
Yeah, we don't have any official historic districts. I think part of the conversation last year from some members of the community and to some extent the planning commission was, should there be an effort to go out and kind of define different character areas with different historical elements, whether that be a mid-century modern neighborhood or a bungalow, or to use the phrasing from tonight, a cottage neighborhood? You could certainly go out and define those and then that could result in regulatory changes that align with that if you chose to do that. But no, we don't have any actually city-endorsed historic districts.
Okay, that's my understanding, but I, you know, maybe I didn't know.
Mr. Fitzgerald, and I'll be with you, Mr. Duran.
Ken, just to reinforce something, on the house that has been completed under the new regulations, they had to move that closer to the center of the lot, did they not? And regulations forced them to change their design? Isn't that correct?
It is. And in fact, I know when my team reviewed the building permit plans, the initial submittal didn't comply with the bulk plane and they had to make further amendments to the plans to push it in.
And I just, I have driven by that house and I think it looks really good. And I encourage people to drive by and decide for themselves whether or not they think the bulk plane ordinance did a good job on that house. What about the other two that are still in construction? Were they forced to make any changes?
I don't know if they came in like compliant from the get-go or not, but I would say they are probably similarly impacted in terms of having to push in beyond those five-foot minimum setbacks. Any, do you guys recall at all specifics? Any, do you guys recall at all specifics?
I don't remember specifics. Where, did they comply with the bulk plane regulations? The person that's calling those, the person that's calling the bulk plane regulations, there's a, is that from Mr. Mann?
Yeah.
And, and one more thing, this is more of a comment, but what I heard you say is that in general, we are in, we're, we are similar to all of our neighboring cities in our bulk plane regulations. Is that, would that be accurate?
Yeah, and that's a good additional observation. And one of the other things that we found out when we did this research in, you know, kind of second quarter of last year, is that we were a bit of an anomaly in that we didn't have bulk plane regulations. All of those adjacent jurisdictions had some form of bulk plane, which was another compelling reason why we thought it was important, an appropriate regulatory tool for us to embrace as well.
Mr. Rann.
Ken, can you confirm with me the percentage of R1Cs in District One, the eastern part? Is it 11%?
I think the reference by the gentleman was 11% citywide. I don't have that, those numbers on, but we can certainly look into that.
So, the majority is probably on the eastern part, and there's little, small little pockets probably throughout the city?
There are.
If I'm going by this map.
That's correct.
Okay, so the majority is on that end?
Much of it is in eastern.
That I just personally consider historical. Never said the city implied it was historical. And I think to drive by and look at a design and say, it looks great, it's different than living next door to it. Thank you.
Mr. Johnstone, the, the house on Eaton Street, was it 50-foot lot?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Davis.
This is the last one. I guess, one more thing, since we're kind of addressing some of these things in the city survey, could we also possibly have a couple Airbnb questions? Or I'd like to ask for consensus to put a couple Airbnb questions on there.
Okay, so consensus on the survey that we're going to do next year of our citizens to have some?
Short-term rental questions.
Short-term rentals, yeah.
STRs?
I mean, I think some of the audience that you hear, I mean, I think there's a general thought that because I have a taller place, that I'm going to have more traffic and those types of things. And I think the thing is, is that we have places in ranch homes that are doing something similar. So, I think that it would just be interesting to have, like, the short-term rental question, some statistically significant guided questions to our citizens.
Okay, so consensus on having short-term rentals be included in the survey?
Clarification first?
Yes, sir.
Just, just to remind everyone, because I will vote for this, but I'm assuming what our past practice is going, going to be repeated, which is, is that we're giving consensus tonight to give staff direction to, to create a draft sense, a survey that will be put in front of us in a study session prior to, to it being published. And so, I just want to make that clarification. We're not building the survey as we sit here, we're building a draft that, we may like the, I'm going to vote yes on this, I may not like the question when I see it, and I may, I may decide that I don't agree with myself.
I think the intent was to, to include that as a topic in the, in the survey and how the question.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, for clarification, I want to make sure everyone, like, procedurally, you know, we're kind of building this and then reviewing it as a draft, and then finalizing it through consensus.
Let me see a show of hands on consensus on that. That's consensus there. Mr. Matthews.
Just for kind of, again, a clarification, could this start, could you give us a synopsis of just which all of the little topics we've actually started putting in the survey now?
Consensus, sure. Yeah, we've only had three right now. One is height, questions about height, build residential height limit, questions about accessory dwelling units, and then the last one was about short-term rentals.
Okay, are we to assume that height includes the bulk plane type part of the question? Is, is it just a flat height limitation? Do we actually miss some of the original intent with the bulk plane?
Remember who, whose consensus was it? Was that yours, Janice?
It's mine, I thought I had added bulk plane in it, but I thought it said height and bulk plane.
It was repeated, just height, that's all I typed, but I thought you originally said bulk plane, but the final consensus was just height, so good clarification.
Well, do you want me to re-ask the?
Sure, or just add, ask to add.
Are, are you asking, is the essence of your question that you're asking, if the existing bulk plane regulation is sufficient?
I don't know how they'll draft the question, however, I do feel like there should be some questions about our height restrictions and our bulk plane.
As it relates to residential?
So, I'd like to, as it relates to residential, and then so I'd like to ask if we can add the bulk plane to the consensus.
And consider the charter. Did you, is that part of the?
No, that was not a consensus.
Bulk plane?
Okay, so the, so the consensus on including a discussion or questions about bulk plane, is that, okay, we have consensus on that then. Mr. Rann?
I'd like to get a consensus on having a separate discussion regarding the 25-foot height limitation in the R1C area.
Well, it's five to three, so not a strong consensus, but a majority.
Fantastic, can we, that's a consensus. Can we put that discussion on a study session, or?
That's what the direction is.
Okay, thank you.
Put that on a study session.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr., I was just going to say, I think I heard from pretty much everybody that they're all in favor of, of moving forward with the NRS discussion, if it's including, some of these are, all of these are none of these topics, but I think NRS in general, to start making sure, getting that moving. I think I heard that from everybody, so it's in the budget, okay. So, we'll, we'll prioritize that and get it started, so we can get started as soon as possible.
Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, Mr. Johnstone, I, I would, let me think, I want to say this. It, it seems to me that there, this is kind of a building block kind of complexity that we're going through. And I'm, I'm trying to, trying to figure, trying to figure out if we should be establishing if A then B, and then when, once we have B then C, you understand what I'm saying? Is there some logical progression to where part D doesn't make sense if we haven't settled part A first?
As, as it pertains to which topic?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, height limitation will be changed if, if we do height limitation, how does that affect bulk plane? Which came first, the chicken or the egg?
Well, so height, if.
And so, from a, from a planning standpoint.
I, I mean, I think the, going further in terms of a height limitation is the next step, right? So, it wouldn't impact bulk plane, bulk plane would still be an appropriate tool that impacts the perimeter of a property, right? But if you, if you want to implement something like a 25-foot overall building height, that impacts the whole property, right? So, it's, I think it's appropriate, it's a good question, it's an appropriate next step to say, okay, we did the bulk plane, that impacts portions of your property in terms of building height, do we want to go to the next step, which is overall height, which would limit whether, whether you could have a third story on a R1C zone lot?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about a logical progression as we move through this.
It's, it seems to me like when we go and start discussing the neighborhood revitalization strategy, that's more of an overall conceptual document that talks about what we want our neighborhoods and our city to look like in an aggregate sense. And it would seem to me like that would be, to your point, Mr. Matthews, more of a fundamental document, that we would, we would take the, the vision, if you will, and, and then apply more strategic and tactical solutions to that vision in order to arrive at a, at a conclusion of where we should be on, on a lot of these issues. Is that, is that a fair?
Precisely. We have to start with the mission statement first, and then go through.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
So, so are you saying then we should start there and, and leave all these other questions until after that is done?
No, I'm saying we have, you know, unlike our federal senate, we probably need to be able to do more than one thing at one time. I think we need to be bringing all of the issues forward. I was just pointing out that at some point in time, when we start doing actual votes, we have to be mindful of how the pieces fit together. And you can't have, you know, if, if you want to build a good house, you have, you have to have the sound foundation, and it has to be built first. And perhaps we do have to, we may decide we do have to figure out what our mission statement is at some point in time and do that first. But meanwhile, let's not hold off on everything else.
Well, and I think, you know, I think as we, as we talk about the, the vision, that, because we've had robust input from our citizens, and will continue to get that, thankfully so, we will have sort of the details, you know, or the, the side issues that will impact how we discuss about the vision, the vision component. Mr. Urban.
Just real quickly on the NRS revisiting of the revitalization strategy, I would ask that as a first step in that, we look back at the nine strategies that were requested to be implemented in the NRS, and understand how far we came to implementing those particular strategies as it relates to that particular study, so that we understand as we go forward in time, relative to any new particular strategies, how, how we're going to implement those particular strategies, and whether the previous strategies should be readopted or recommitted to, or scraped or otherwise improved upon, to make sure that we're still on track to meet those strategies, or again, just completely do away with them and come up with new strategies. So, I would ask us to look at that being our first step, is to understand where we've come from before we decide where we're going.
Mr. Johnstone, it would be typical for us to, to, when we, when we step up into looking again at the NRS, that we would look at the recommendations and the context that those recommendations were, were, how they were arrived at, to Mr. Urban's point, where, you know, what, what we've done, did we achieve those? Have, have market or social conditions changed that would make some of those strategies no longer, no longer viable? And, and so that we would get somewhat a report card back on where we were on that strategy, is that where you were? And then, then we would launch back into what are this current context that we need to look at. We would look at a lot of these other issues that, that 10 years or 15 years ago, were not, not in the market, Airbnb, and, and there wasn't the, you know, ADU discussion at that time. And we would incorporate those into our discussion on the NRS.
Yes, yes, yes.
Precisely, to use Mr. Matthews' words, precisely, that's exactly what we've been talking about. That's our intent, is to hopefully bring back, at least for the first phase, the initial consultant, Charles Bookie, who helped us put together the first NRS, do exactly as Mr. Urban said. We've already put together a list of the things that we think we've accomplished to meet those nine strategies, Mr. Urban, and, and I think you're exactly right, that needs to be the first discussion, and what has changed over a decade, and what, what's no longer valid, what's no longer a priority, and what, maybe what are the new priorities?
Like affordability.
Yes, like affordability.
Was not an issue.
And, yes.
If I could ask one question, this has all been very helpful. One, one thing that we were going to do, we've obviously shared the results today, with the asterisk that everyone knows, you know, we didn't, it's not a statistically valid survey, but it's still, you know, it's still a tool, right? We had, we, our intent would be to post those results to be available on the city's website, not reopen the, the survey mechanism for any additional input, but let people know what the results were. We may not leave those up forever, just to the extent that, you know, if, if the citizen survey results might trump those at some point in future, but leave the results up, posted on the city's website for some reasonable period of time.
Do we have consensus on that? Okay, that looks, that looks good. Mr. Rann?
Can we also run those on Channel Eight?
I, I'm not a Channel Eight expert, but we can certainly look into that.
We could look at maybe doing some of the key.
If you could, that'd be great.
Several slides, yeah, we'll look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Or maybe even just that, yeah, we'll look at that, yes.
Do we, do we feel that we've, we've had a good, a good discussion on this? Is there any more discussion that the council would like to have relative to item number four on our agenda? Thank you. That, that I believe, find my place in my notebook, but those were the four items we had on our agenda, and I think we've discussed those, and I think we could stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks, members of the audience and citizens for being here, we appreciate your input.